Can we call this meeting to order? Can we all rise and please say the Pledge of Allegiance? It's behind us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This is the meeting of the School Committee on Thursday, February 2nd, 2023. Welcome. Welcome, student representatives. We're going to have any comments and statements from the public? Having none this evening, we're going to move on to our informational agenda, and we have some hot shots at the end of the table. Who we starting with tonight?
Sure, I can go first.
All right.
Sure, my lady.
Ryan Keen, go for it, buddy.
All right. Good evening, Superintendent Alden, all school committee members, and everyone else in attendance this evening. Westport Middle High School has its fourth Career Fair today. Grade eight had a wonderful and insightful opportunity to meet people from forty-nine different businesses and organizations and ask questions about their fields of work, positions, and what their education and other experiences. Our school building will be open for the second community tour this Saturday, February 4th, from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. Tours will be given by high school and middle school big buddies along with student council members. We had over two hundred community members visit last time, and we can't wait to welcome more people into our amazing new school. The Middle School Drama Club will be presenting Once Upon This Island on February 9th, 10th, at six-thirty, and February 11th, at two o'clock. Tickets are ten dollars and will be sold at the door. The Westport Middle School City Council is selling candy grabs for Valentine's Day, and they cost one dollar for two. Eighth-grade students participating in the DC trip are selling raffle tickets this week. The tickets cost twenty dollars, and for each ticket sold, the student seller will earn a ten-dollar trip credit, and three winning raffle tickets will win fantastic cash prizes. Thank you in advance for our support on any eighth-grade student you may know that is planning on going on this trip. February vacation is fast approaching, and is Saturday, February 18th through Sunday, February 26th of February. There will be a dance held for grades five and six on Friday, March 3rd. MCAS dates for grades five through eight have been posted on the Westport Community Schools website and can be found on the middle school page. Lastly, our middle school girls and boys' basketball teams have made great strides this season. Their games will finish prior to February vacation. That's all.
Thank you very much. Excellent. Great job. Who's next?
I'll go next. All right. So hello, Superintendent Alden, and all school committee members here today. So recently, the Class of 2024 has had a calendar raffle and has just ended today, and there will be a winner chosen for every day of February. The next issue of The Wildcat will be coming out at the end of February, beginning of March, and will be featuring the many events and happenings that have occurred during the winter season. Candy grams have started in the high school, and it will be a fundraiser run by the GSA. The price is one dollar or an additional fifty cents for sending it anonymously. The sophomore student council is running a Valentine's-themed paint night on Tuesday, 7th, at four forty-five to seven thirty. Entry is fifteen dollars. The sophomore student council is also holding a Valentine's Day movie night on the fourteenth of February for middle and high school students. The movie is Five Feet Apart, and tickets are ten dollars each. The movie will be shown from two-thirty till four-thirty. STEEL is also holding a boutonniere slash corsage raffle for prom, and tickets will be five dollars each. See Mrs. Avila or STEEL member for tickets. The drawing of winners will be on April 24th. The second AP study session will take place this Saturday at the New Durfee High School for AP English, Lang, and Lit. This will be from seven forty-five AM until eleven forty-five to prepare students for the AP English exams, which will occur in the beginning of May. Passing these exams is important for students because they can receive college credits for receiving a passing score. On this past Saturday, the public was invited to the new Westport Middle High School per tour. The building and building committee have received rave reviews, and as a student here, I can certainly agree with the comment that the building is a beautiful, light-filled space to learn. Thank you to all those who came. The Westport Community Schools Special Education Parent Advisory Council is encouraging people to attend their meeting and presentation on Wednesday, February 8th, from six-thirty to seven-thirty in the high school media center. The topic of the meeting will be on IEDs versus Bible fours. Finally, grab a copy of The Westport Shorelines to see the Westport High School's student newspaper, The Wildcat, featured on the front page. Thank you.
Yes, getting on all the newspapers now, Alden. Congratulations. Thank you. Jack?
All right. So these two have already said.
A man in a few words is always admired, Jack.
Take your time.
Then we got some sports in. So already, students at the high school are already over a little, little over a week into the second semester, and everyone is currently settling into and getting adjusted to their new classes. So I know both of them mentioned the Career Fair at the school, and we'd just like to say that it was a success, and we want to thank Mrs. Rurrell, Mrs. Gorgeous, and anyone else who was involved in organizing such a great event. And then, as a reminder, there are more building tours, the second ones of the year, from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty on Saturday, February 2nd, or Saturday, February 3rd, I'm sorry. And as some, just some quick reminders, MCAS dates are set for grades nine and 10, and they're posted on the Westport High School's page and on the Westport Community Schools page. And as another save the date, high school graduation, it is far away, but it will take place on Saturday, June 3rd, at eleven AM. And then, don't forget to water your plants and mark your calendar for the High School Drama Club's presentation of Little Shop of Horrors. That's on March 17th, 18th, and 19th. So that's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So now, we have quite a bit of sports information. So our winter sports teams, they continue to all have stellar seasons. The boys' varsity team is currently ten and three. They had a win last night, and their next game will be played Monday night at home at six-thirty against Bishopstang, so a big game. And everyone is encouraged to join us and support our team and add to the spirit that the incredible pep band and cheerleaders provide. And remember, if you can't attend in person, you can always listen to our live stream on the Westport Community TV, which is commentated by yours.
I was just going to say, isn't somebody just doing a plug for his own show?
And after Monday night's game, the boys will only have one more regular season home game, and that will be held on Friday, February 10th, against Holbrook. The boys JV team is currently seven and five, and the boys freshman team is also two and six. Now, the girls varsity team, outstanding season. They continue with an eleven-and-two record, and their games are also streamed on our channel. Their next home game is Wednesday, February 8th, at five PM against West Bridgewater. Those are two big games coming up, so hopefully we can get some big crowds there.
Absolutely.
And then, the girls junior varsity basketball team is five and four. Now, our co-op hockey team, outstanding season. They are ten and one, and they are eight and oh in the Mayflower. And lastly, I would like to give a big congratulations to Corinne Holden, Julia George, and Tess Sylvia for being selected as the Herald News Greater Fall Rivers Girls Soccer All-Scholastic Team.
Excellent. Thank you.
Great job.
Any questions from the committee members? All right. You may exit the building, which I'm sure you've been in all day, and it's time to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Great job.
Great job.
Yeah, I heard the Career Fair, Mr. Alden, was great, and I would like to say thank you because your fingerprints were all over it this time he was there, so.
If it's okay, I just want to mention Danny Mark's also plays a role in that, too, so I want to give him a shout out, too.
Well, you're going to be able to do that because it's time for the superintendent report.
Yeah, you know, they're so good. I mean, they do a lot.
No, no, you don't have to do anything.
It's making my life much easier. I got to be honest with you. I will just piggyback on the fact that, you know, what made the job fair unbelievably successful wasn't just the fact that our kids got to explore different careers and possible opportunities with the networking, but what was really interesting was that we were able to, thanking the IT department, bring the Z-Space computers down and have some of the tradespeople who were there actually working with that, and they actually provided some expertise in terms of how we can even make our technical training for our kids more robust. So it was a great day, a great day for Westport, and I couldn't be more proud. The other thing is, next week, we'll be presenting to the Finance Committee our budget, and, you know, we're still in the budget process. I do want to say that there's a million people out there who are saying all kinds of different things in terms of, you know, what the cuts are going to be. We don't know what they're going to be, and you know that because you guys do the budget and the policy.
If you knew what they were going to be, you didn't share it with us.
Right. Right. So what I'm just basically saying to people is, look, we're working through this process. It's an annual process that you're very familiar with, and we're going to do the best we can to do what's best for our kids. But, you know, again, there's a lot of things that we don't know yet, so just, you know, do our best to keep people informed. And that's it.
Anybody have any questions, Superintendent? Thank you very much, Superintendent Alden. We're going to, Bill Warren is here, just for everyone's point of order. On two-ten-twenty-three, two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. All committee members have had an opportunity to review and question those items, so I'm going to move along from that point. Mr. Toma, you're, you've been requested because we want to hear about those insurance costs for the computers and the cracked screens and all the other things that happen around this place. We want to know what we need to do and what our options are.
Sure. So I do have an update. Whatever information you were given last time, I was able to get an update based on a couple of differences. So you have the list that reflects fourteen hundred Chromebooks, basically the district-wide count. And I also have an option in front of me that was able to just capture the grades five through twelve, the students who actually take them home versus the ones who don't take them home, which might obviously generate a different type of damage regardless. The pricing is roughly the same. If you have, let me just go through the coverages first, and we can discuss all of the charges per type of coverage. So we have option one in my list, mind you. I see that damage, cracked screens, liquid, submersion and spills, theft, fire, and flooding damage, vandalism, natural disasters, power surge, mechanical failure, and manufacturer defect. So that would be one group at roughly thirty-one dollars per Chromebook annually. So all of those things are covered. You certainly don't want to encourage someone to just toss it into the water, but the fact is, if it does fall into the water, it would be covered for full replacement at that thirty-one dollars per student. Option two would be a little less. Accidental damage, cracks, liquid spills, fire, flood, vandalism, natural disasters, power surge. It would get rid of the mechanical and manufacturing points, but it's also a lot cheaper. So instead of thirty-one, it's fifteen. Very drastic drop in the price. And then we have option three, which has a mix of both. We added power surge based on lightning, and, actually, that was the only item. And that goes up to twenty-three dollars.
What does that one have that the other two don't have? The twenty-three dollar one?
So the twenty-three dollar one has what the fifteen dollar one has.
Plus power surge.
Plus power surge.
So lightning coverage.
That's correct.
So how often do we get struck by lightning? Just asking.
I haven't experienced it yet.
Okay.
How about the mechanical? You said something about the difference is mechanical.
Yes. So the mechanical meaning that if a key is no longer working, if, you know, the enter key isn't working, if the hinge on the screen is, you know,
That's when you should keep it.
Trouble with it or falling off. That's an example of the mechanical side.
How often do we see those?
A lot.
A lot.
A lot. So you want to keep that?
That's why it's the third.
That's a thirty-one, yes. A lot. The keys are gone, and, yeah.
Well, I mean, I rely on the people that are in this building. From my information, if you're saying that that happens a lot, then obviously that would be something that would be foolhardy not to get.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Well, I think it would depend on how much it costs to replace because seven cents for a key, do you know what I mean, versus not? So I would ask, how much is it to replace those mechanism pieces? And is it worth the potential of fifteen times all the computers? Or is it, like, substantially less? Do you know what I mean?
So it's a great question. So let me answer it in two different ways.
Sure.
Part one would be us in-house doing any type of labor, which we've done in the past, but there are limitations. When we do labor in-house, we're obviously taking our time away from going and visiting the classrooms and doing other various things, including prep work. Notwithstanding, there are also things that we may not have a supply of. Samsung will definitely have a supply of their own keys, space bar, their touchpad, and certainly the bezels for the screens. We have to rob and pillage another broken one to make that one, or we go on Amazon and cross-fingers that those parts exist, which not always do they exist. So we're kind of hedging our bets when we try to do the work in-house versus sending it out. But it is possible. We have done it in the past. I would look at the other side, which would be, if it was insured by either the parent or the school district, one way or the other, it's a simple, you put it in a box, you ship it off, you receive it. It's at zero cost because the fee has already, excuse me, the fee has already been paid. So those are the couple of things that I always look at as a consideration about our time versus, and the students' time. They may go a day, depending on how quickly we receive the message that the machine is broken. They may not have it for a day.
You don't have a replacement that you give them?
We, most of the time, but depending on how many loaners we have prepped. So if there's thirteen kids, and we only have five prepped for the day, that would obviously put a dent into how we can deliver them.
Does that happen more often than not?
Not yet, but at the same time, we don't have students who have taken advantage of any type of insurance. So a lot of the times.
Because we haven't offered it to them, have we?
No, but most of the time, let me put it in a different way. If I break something, I'm probably not telling you. It's going to be, I'm going to find out because I can no longer use it anymore, and then it becomes a problem.
So can we just?
We have students who walk on a broken screen for months.
Just elaborate on that because that's going to be my question. What do we currently do when we hand them out at the beginning of the school year? Do we offer insurance? Do we?
No, we do not.
The school doesn't, the school hasn't taken that on?
No.
So currently, no insurance?
That is correct.
Well, we've looked at other districts, and most of them that are doing the Chromebooks have an insurance policy, and the students bear that cost. That's my understanding.
Yes, that is correct.
So I know that we've had these discussions before.
I remember way at the beginning.
And we had said that we wanted to have the insurance policy, and then it was supposed to go to policy, I think. I don't know what happened.
Yeah, but we talked a little about it.
I remember that back to policy.
And I think it was before. Can I just ask one more question?
Yes.
So, and then currently, along those lines as well with, like, if a student finally comes and says it's broken, do you have one for me? What's our backup supply right now?
Right now, we do have a backup supply.
You do have a backup supply?
Yes. Until last year, we had to rob and pillage other older Chromebooks and really cross-fingers that we don't run out before the next student comes in.
And if I may, I think what has helped is that we are not allowing the younger students to bring that home anymore. Now it's, you know.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
So, does anybody?
Yeah, I just want to.
Which is totally out of order, but I'm letting it happen because I like you, Rick.
One, I don't, Tony, if we want to maybe, I don't know if we're making any decisions tonight, but we could also loop in, get in touch. I spoke with at least two, at one at least Chromebook part vendor at MasQ that they specialize in that. So we could, we could loop in that and see what their stock and supply and and that sort of thing is, too.
So there is a point where, and thank you for that. Rick and I did talk about that a month and a half ago.
Just talking about, don't understand. What do you mean? There's another vendor?
They're like a vendor that, they're a business that is in business selling Chromebook parts, selling spare parts for Chromebooks. Like, that's their whole niche.
They don't fix it, they just sell the parts.
Yeah, they sell the parts. So that would be the option that you were talking about, where we would fix it in-house, but we, if we could, you know, it could be maybe a reliable source for.
That would be the twenty-three dollar option.
Oh, no, no, that would be just like.
Unrelated to insurance.
Yeah, yeah. Nothing to do with insurance. Sorry.
To me, that's like an additional cost. If you're paying thirty-one, it doesn't matter what's broken, it gets fixed. And if the screen's costing you forty or seventy or whatever, it seems like you're paying more for what's something that could be less.
My only concern with that, and I don't think thirty-one dollars is a ridiculous cost for a year of the use of a Chromebook. Okay. Let me begin now. All I'm saying is, is that, do we have any other school systems that are using that particular, that are taking that thirty-one dollars? And somebody that can tell us, yeah, they fix it right away? If the turnaround time's right there, they're on it. Or are we going to end up in Sludge Fest, where we pay thirty-one dollars and we send it out, and now we don't get it back for three weeks? And then, we have all that, if we have all of those interruptions, and we're not sure that the thirty-one dollars is going to be a turnaround time, we're going to get it back? I mean, that's why I love getting stuff. I'm not promoting anybody, but there are certain places that are electronic places that are, you know, somewhere in Dartmouth, that if you go there and you get their warranty and you get something, and like, within the next day, you're getting it back. There's no wait time. And that's my concern.
Yep.
Is you pay the thirty-one dollars sometimes, and then, you know, kind of like you get a warranty on your refrigerator, and the guy never comes out. And when he comes out, he says he can't fix it anyway. So that's what I'm concerned about.
So I can find the turnaround time. My experience with this very company on iPads was about a week. We would send it out, we'd receive the fixed item within.
But that was iPads one, how long ago? I don't want to age you, but.
Four-plus years ago.
Okay, so that's pre-COVID?
Correct.
Where everybody can, shipping, and, we can't do this, and blah, 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 blah. I'm very concerned about that turnaround time and the investment in it.
When you're talking to grades five through eight, so you're talking less amount of.
Five to twelve.
Five to twelve. Okay, so that means there's a lot less avail, I mean, there's availability because the younger kids aren't using it. I like that because it gives accountability to the kids.
Well, I agree. I think that we all agree that we should have the insurance. I don't think there's any discussion there. It was what we're going to pick, right? And because the cost is going to be, it has to, it has to go to the students. We don't have, we don't have any money in the budget. I'm not even going to play around with it. We don't have any money. You know, that would be, Tony did the math by twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-six, six?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand dollars.
How many, that'd be about eight hundred?
Eight hundred. Nine hundred.
Nine hundred?
I can put out to the listserv, to the other districts, to see what type of insurance other people are using, talk about the repair time, the replacement time, all of that, and see what other districts are using.
So what I, what I.
And how they're handling paying for.
Does anybody else have any questions, Mr.? I mean, what I'm suggesting is, is we put this on the action agenda for the next school committee meeting, and you say, this policy, we call these districts, they say they have a great turnaround town, good thing. You know, this is, you know, this is, this is the company. We'll pick thirty-one, twenty-three, or fifteen. We'll make that decision. But what I'm saying is, is that, you know, hearing from other school systems, I'd rather just not jump into something and commit our students without knowing.
Laura has in Swansea, she says Swansea, because Carrie also said they have it. You can ask them, too.
Yeah, they do. So let's do that, and we'll put it on for the next school committee.
Sure.
Yeah, so the other thing that I might be interested in knowing is what's going to happen with students who can't afford it? Because we are going to have students who can't afford even fifteen dollars, quite frankly.
We're going to find out from other districts.
Right. Well, also, it would be good to know where that is. And I think it's, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I think if we're mandating our students have a Chromebook, which we are, I think it's a little bit difficult to mandate a fee to it as well. I do think that that's a little difficult because there are some kids who have their own Chromebooks, but they can't bring it. So now we're going to be mandating that. So just kind of think about it. I mean, is that, is that, is that okay to do?
Well, it's okay because a lot of districts do it. But is it okay for us philosophically to do?
But do they give the cost? So I guess, I guess we'll find out the answer. You're saying that they're all providing it to their students? So I'd like to know that if they're all giving it to their students.
And I want to just have that verified. I don't want, I've heard. I don't have them called.
I like it.
And I think that that's good. And what they do with their children that can't afford would be, you know, I mean, again, we're not inventing the wheel here. It's already been invented. So let's just put out some feelers. You have some?
And Tony, what's the cost of a new Chromebook today?
Two-fifty plus.
Two-fifty, so thirty.
And they've gone up by about forty or fifty bucks in the last year.
Buy a lot of new Chromebooks.
Yeah, yeah, correct. I think about this.
Right. Twenty, you could take that money and buy it.
Well, we're not taking money because we don't.
No.
Can I also ask, can I also know what we spent on fixing the computers last year? Like, what was, what was the cost? Like, do you have a line item budget for, specifically for?
No, there was, there was no line item budget. Last year, we didn't repair any Chromebooks. We swapped them out, and we are holding them accountable. I had, I had to collect money before I could start buying parts. I haven't bought the parts yet. I just made an order for about eight hundred dollars' worth of screens.
So we haven't bought any parts in the last two years?
Well, we didn't need to the year before because we had just bought brand-new ones last year.
But, you know, there has to be some, what are we teaching here? But, you know, there, there has to be some, what are we teaching here? There has to be, in my opinion, some ownership on the students.
Lot of accountability.
There, again, everything that we have in this building, everything that we do, came at the cost of the taxpayers in Westport. And how dare we allow our students not have some ownership in the fact that they're in this beautiful building that's so well-lighted, and they have all the technology, and we're giving them that advanced technology and that ability, to not take care of that of which they're given? You know, I, I, I just think it sends the wrong message when we don't make our kids, as Gloria had said, so it was, I just figured back. Um, what you said was, it, it, it's, it's right. It's spot on, and we have to give them a responsibility, and they have to be vested in it. And, you know, and, and I've heard sto-, you know, sometimes kids, whatever, you know, that sometimes some things break, things happen, but sometimes you're careless and you're not bringing it. And I do think that in, under policy, we should be mandating that they use those cases that we have with those Chromebooks and stop having them willy-nilly under their arms, walking around the school. I mean, I.
So, but we have some students who put them in their backpack, but then they have five, four subjects that have four books, so their backpack weighs like thirty-five pounds, and then their screen gets broken because it's too stuffed in their backpack that they're carrying around because there are lockers in the other side of the building that they can't get to because their classes are over here and there's not enough time to go back and forth. And so, you do have situations.
No, I'm not saying that there's not situat-, I'm not saying that that does not, I'm talking about the ownership and the insurance. The locker thing still, we were in Durfee, which is huge.
I went to my locker five times a day. I don't, I don't understand the locker situation.
Talk about the distance to travel. Try to make it in Durfee from the gym all the way up to the floor and get back in five minutes. You don't have to just trot it out.
I rode to the gym. That was like a three and a half mile walk.
I mean, right. We used to go opposite, yes. Everything was uphill at Durfee.
Well, you walked seven miles to school.
The hilltop is for a reason. I mean, we, we have to go uphill.
Would it be thirty-one, or fifteen, or twenty-three per year for the duration that they hold the Chrome?
Per year.
Per year.
Per year. So, I mean, nothing happens to it? Maybe you get your insurance, or you're back?
No, they don't give it back. You just, you're paying for it, like you're in your car, you.
No, I understand, but, I mean, it's.
It doesn't go anywhere.
And we're giving these kids, we're giving these kids a, a brand-new Chromebook. Obviously, they use it for school work.
I am with you.
But they obviously can use it for other things at home.
Yes.
They're doing other things on these Chromebooks. I don't think it's too much to ask to pay the insurance.
Well, you know what? We're gonna put it on the action.
We should, we, we do need an option for, for those, because we will get some.
Of course, we'll have an option, yeah.
And we'll, we'll come up with something.
Yeah, I, I just think we'll put it on the action agenda. We'll vote at the next meeting, and, and we're just, we're just gonna do this. Again, I hate pushing.
We're not giving them a box of crayons. I mean, this is a high-tech piece of equipment, so.
Understood, and I think that, I think, I think that you, you have the consensus. So, I think that we'll put that on the action agenda. When you have that, we'll be, and have the other districts, and we'll have that information.
It's one less coffee run, I mean.
Anybody else? Anybody have any more editorial comments, Mr. Monas? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Thank you, Mr. Toma.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monas, for chiming in. Appreciate that. I knew it would be worth it if I took you out of order, and. So, we're gonna move on to the acknowledgement of two grants that we've received totaling eighty-two hundred dollars from the South Coast Community Foundation for the Westport Middle High School Promotional Brochure. Those were the open house brochures
They were.
that the Bucks orchestrated, and some folks around Westport put in their time, and we really, really do appreciate it in having two hundred people come out to that open house. But I hear the Arctic Blast, which is gonna be Saturday. And I'll remind everybody that there is heat inside the building. It's very warm inside here, so.
Might be warmer than the houses.
It, it might be warmer than some houses with, you know, with the ice and stuff. It might be the warmest place in town to be. So, just saying that, you know, you're just walking from the car into the building, and, you know, we, 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 we talked about pushing this off another day, but, you know, this brochure was so beautiful. It did open the building up. The invitation's out. It's been posted. It's been published. And I just don't think that, you know, Mr. Alden said that him and Michelle did make it, you know, should we move it? I did talk to the Bucks. They said, you know, it's up to you folks. You guys are running it.
You can almost have another day, another time, too. You can have this one, and then if you feel, you know, want to.
You can always add another one.
So, you can always add more.
All right.
So, Madam Chair, I actually contacted the AVEA superintendents. Nobody is canceling either tomorrow or any event Saturday, so.
Glad to see that New Englanders are getting back to business. This is what we do. Remember, we used to be a foot of snow, and you still have to make it to school on foot?
Have to walk to school.
My age even.
Nancy, want to hit something else?
Oh, go ahead, Tony. I should have not given him the opportunity.
After walking to school uphill in the cold, I mean.
Seven miles.
Seven miles.
My hands wouldn't thaw out until like third period. I mean.
So, I mean, your school was warm. See, there you go.
And we had gym in the morning. It was terrible because it couldn't play.
It was good, definitely. Okay, we're gonna move on to our action agenda. Review and act on the minutes of Thursday, January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. That would be the school committee meeting, and on January twenty-fourth, the twenty-twenty-three budget work session. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to accept it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
All right, that motion carries. Review and act on the Westport High School field trip grades ten to twelve for the man that never rests and always plans. Portugal and Spain, again, another interesting trip for Nancy to consider, April break of twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Monas.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you, committee. So, this is a little early for my typical schedule, but I took a look out at the calendar and realized that April of twenty-twenty-five has Good Friday ahead of it, so that gives it us, us an opportunity to have a little bit of a longer trip. This is a twelve-day trip. We ran it in twenty-eighteen. It's magnificent. It starts in Portugal and tracks southward and then east up through to Marso-, ends in Barcelona. I think this is gonna be a very popular trip, where Portugal is, being first, and I'm really excited to that. So, with, with those things in mind, I wanted to get very far ahead of it to give the most, give the most people the opportunity and the, the ability to spread out the payments as long as possible, which is keeping the payment on this trip on, around a hundred and fifty dollars a month, which I would say any student with an even very small part-time job would be able to afford themselves, which is what I always try to go for, so.
So, Mr. Monas, what's the cost of the overall trip? I know there's discounts in all of that.
Sure, I, I'd have to pull it up exactly. I believe it's thirty-seven hundred dollars.
So, when, when you, when you're gonna put this trip out, what, what's your timeline? When are you thinking of putting this trip out to the student body?
If I, if we approve tonight, I'm gonna have the introduction meeting the week after the week we get back from break.
And when would you, because you've got kids paying, mine included, for the East in Europe trip, so.
So, that would be, yeah.
So, it would, those payments would overlap for them to go to Spain?
Correct.
So.
Which is, it, it, that's true, but it does, it, it also, there's no, there's no obligation to start, there's no obligation to start at this point, but it does spread, it does spread that out. There are, there are some people that are, if they're, if you're going on multiple trips, you've got, you've got it.
Yeah, my kids aren't going. They get one trip. So, anybody else have any questions? Do I have a motion to accept the trip?
Motion to accept the trip.
A second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
None in dissent. That passed. Mr. Monas, go do what you do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have DC coming up next, right?
No, Belize.
Oh, is it Belize first?
Belize in fourteen days, then DC.
Crossing your fingers in DC in March. Crossing my fingers.
Oh, it'll be, it'll be pretty.
All right.
Thank you.
We're gonna review an act on the joining of the class action suit for school districts against social media companies. So, this is TikTok, YouTube, a couple others. This is the same law firm that is doing the Juul suit. They're now going into the social media forum. So, they, they sent, they settled the Juul suit for tons and tons of money. What we'll ever get out of that could be the dollar, you know, when you join those class actions. We don't know what we're gonna get, but that's for another time. But there's no risk to us and no cost obligation to us to join these lawsuits. And I think that we've had these discussions about social media and the negative effects it's had on our kids. So, I would entertain a motion to join this class action suit.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Having none, and all in favor?
Hi.
None opposed. Moving along. Routine matters, correspondence, and notices? I don't have any. Topics the chair could not reasonably anticipate? I did not anticipate that our next school committee meeting is scheduled for school vacation week. So, I would.
I believe.
Do you believe this? Is this going to?
I thought I had sixteen.
Oh, wow.
I believe it's the sixteenth, Nancy.
Huh?
I think it's the sixteenth. It's the week before.
That would be the week before. Right. All right, because somebody had told me it was.
I thought it was the twenty-third, so it's not the twenty-third? Okay.
We're gonna double-check just to make sure.
All right, we'll just double-check on that.